Yes.
All right, I'll give the motion to reconvene.
Mr. President.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up on the agenda, we were at number four.
The next thing on the agenda is gonna be, yeah.
Discussion of Resolution RS dash two oh two oh dash oh one dash oh five for Amber Meadows Trail Easement of Acceptance.
Okay. So, what is, what this is, is that Pulte has finished developing Amber Meadows, but they have a trail easement on their plat that says to be dedicated to the Village of Marvin. We actually have to accept that through a resolution. So I've presented the resolution today, and I guess we're gonna look at it and not...
You'll approve it up.
Yeah, you can approve it in the consent agenda, but also included is where, the location of this easement. I think you're all familiar where it is. It's between Amber Meadows and the Creek branch. They're just accepting the trail easement.
Have we fixed it since we got the money?
No, but we can't fix it until we accept it because it's not ours yet.
Correct.
We have to accept the easement before we go on.
Is it ever gonna connect anywhere with it? Because remember the gentleman came in and he was all, he was all, "Don't fix it until..."
Yeah, I know. Our current plan shows it tying into Tullamore, but as it was noted, that that tie in is actually a little, a little bit outside of Marvin's boundaries. So we're gonna, I've already emailed the county planner, see if we can coordinate that, but the plan does...
Is there an easement back there to connect it?
Not that I know of. We're gonna have to work on that.
But we are simultaneously working on the bids for the construction too, so we haven't solved the project still.
Correct.
All right.
All right.
Any other questions on this or concerns from the council?
Uh-uh.
All right.
We'll put that on the... I make a motion to put RS dash two zero two here, dash zero one, dash zero five, Resolution to Accept Amber Meadows Trail Easement on the Consent Agenda for Adoption at the next regular session council meeting on February 11th, 2020.
Approve of the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Next up, we have Discussion of Tullamore Conservation Area Bond release.
All right. So last time we released bonds, we did not release the Tullamore Conservation Bond because the engineer had not done a review yet, but he has done a review now. He's found that the, everything is good, and he recommends a full approval of this bond.
Wow.
Okay.
Do you know the amount?
Yeah, the amount is here. It is $171,000, 700, $171,750.
We'll put that on the consent as well.
Okay. So we need a motion. There are no questions, I assume, or concerns?
Everybody good with that?
Good.
South?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve that. To move that on to the...
Okay. I make a motion to put the full release of Tullamore Conservation Bond on the Consent Agenda for Adoption at the next regular session council meeting on February 11th, 2020.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is Discussion of Council Office Hours and Referendum for Additional Council Seat.
Correct. All right, so this is me. So, um, I have been, and I think I've talked to each of you individually about this, but I think it would be helpful for our constituents if they have open access to them. And if we had, you know, if we were a larger city, we'd have offices and office hours and all that stuff. So I was just thinking, it might be a good idea that if like once a month, like, you know, Bob and I are here on Mondays from 10 to 11, or Joe and I are here on, you know, whatever, but have a time each month that we're available, and if anybody from the community wants to come in and have a conversation, or talk about something, or air some grievances, then they know that, you know, I'll be here at this time along with somebody else, or whatever. I just kinda thought it would be a good idea to implement something like that, or does that...
Were we required, were, you want us to be here?
Yeah.
Well, we sort of have that. And, yes. And I have always left Wednesday mornings from 10 to 11 is what's called, I coined it, cup of Joe with Joe, meaning that any, it's open office space, not for developers or anyone like that, but for residents, HOAs.
But do you come in here and sit on...
I do not come in here. All I ask of the public is to, by Monday, if they wanna have a meeting the Monday before, 'cause I leave it open.
I know, but, but I don't think that the, I don't think the community knows that. So if, if we wanna do something like that, and I think it's a good idea, then we need to send it out, you know, on a monthly basis. Hey, if you've got something that you wanna talk about, this is when I'm available, you know, call the office and, you know, let us know you're coming. And then if we don't, I mean, I'm fine coming in here and, you know, sitting for an hour, and if it's two of us sitting here, you know, we can chit chat about stuff, and, or, you know, do other, you know, talk to staff, get, you know, caught up on stuff, whatever. Or if they're gonna make an appointment, then we can, we know we need to be here. And I'm not saying on a weekly basis, but like on a monthly basis.
But see, I offer it on a weekly basis, which anyone that's having, hey, I wanna talk to, and maybe...
But I don't think anybody knows that.
Okay, so then, then that's a communication issue, because all I'm saying is, I would hate to come here and not to, we go back in the days, if you look before you guys were here, you may have been here, but when Lanny was around, I mean, he was, you know, bless his heart and his soul, but when he would come in here, he would end up getting in conversations with staff. Just the fact that we're here creates that, and then it doesn't allow them to get their work done. Not that I wanna be antisocial or anything, but it ended up getting to a point where it was taking up too much, where we actually had to make a rule that you had to have an appointment with staff, which is, I think, where we got to. But what I'm saying, if it's a communication issue and people don't know about it, then we, we put that over to the person that's doing the website, and says, you know, "Oh, by the way, did you know that you can come and talk to your council member? He's available. All we ask is that you set up, by, by Monday, they call you, you let me know, hey, Joe, you have an appointment on..." Otherwise, come here just to sit here.
But I'm not saying on a weekly basis, but like I've gotten to...
But I'm doing it on a weekly, I'm offering it on a weekly basis.
And you can, but, like, I've got, I mean, I can sit here for an hour, you know, once a month.
You want to spend more time with me?
No, I really kept saying Bob or Danny. I don't know. I mean, if you guys don't think it's a good idea...
I'm not saying it's not a good idea, I'm just saying it's already in place.
Would you like, I would offer to send out my mail chip once a month to remind...
Yeah, just like a reminder.
To remind the community that, you know, you, you can come and speak with your council members, just give me a call and set an appointment. And if you, you wanna have a specific day that you're gonna be here, and, or, you know, we can communicate that out on a monthly basis, and then when the new website gets up, then we can have something on there that rotates on the website all the time that council has office hours from these, these times.
Yeah.
Come, come speak with your council member.
With the caveat, "for constituents, not developers."
Right, right. And I could put it, I could just make it citizen-specific and not developers. Developers have to go through the same avenue that they do with everything else, but citizens don't have to do that.
Prior to...
And who's HOAs too, so...
I was gonna say, prior to, you know, just being a member of the community, prior to starting to attend council meetings, you know, back really last year, somewhere, I don't know where I picked it up, but I had heard about this cup of Joe with Joe. And it was sort of like from the council meetings or somewhere, it just floated up, and I thought, oh, I didn't know he was always available. And I mean, I'm just a member of the community. And I like that idea, it's catchy, but we could maybe, if, if, to your point, Kim, expand it a little bit, and just have a cup of Joe with Joe, or a council member, you know, and do it once a month instead of once a week, you know, but, but you were opening yourself up for that, but that's great. But I was thinking, yeah, we can do it once a month, and somebody may just wanna talk and, and either meet with Joe, or, and it could be a feedback...
And it has happened with other HOAs. It has happened with HOAs, I remember, Tullamore was definitely one, one that would come in and had some issues and stuff, so we can get this on the work session, then moves to the regular meetings if it becomes an issue that, you know...
Well, we can, we can have it to where you have coffee with your council members and you can rotate on a monthly basis.
Coffee with council, how about?
Coffee with council, say like, like, like Bob will start out for the first month and...
I kinda think it would be good to have two people, because then there's not a, well, Joe promised that I would get, you know...
Well, we talked about that before, always having someone else in the...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you would have two members that, and, you know, rotate that.
I like it from a standpoint that it gives, I, I would want it to be consistent, as, 'cause I put myself on, outside the box looking in. I'd rather have a consistent piece, that if someone went out on the website, you know, I'm thinking about this, well, you know, and make it, you know, set a certain time, like you said. I don't mind coming in here once a week for an hour or two. I bring my laptop in here.
Yeah.
And if no one's in here, I just sit in here and work on my laptop, get my, you know, get stuff done.
Yeah.
And, you know, it, it opens me up, or if I have questions or something comes up, I can ask, you know, work with you, or ask you questions, stuff like that, and I'm done, check out. Then next week is, you know, so maybe I do that, you know, the first week of the month and the, the third week of the month, you know, Joe and I do it, then you guys have two and four. Transparency, I think, is the, is the, you know, is the disinfectant to all problems. And as long as we're doing that, I, 'cause I'm a big, I'm another big proponent of getting out to the HOAs and, and doing it, doing it where they're like, God, I'm tired of seeing the council members. 'Cause I can promise you that for so many years, I didn't know who the council members were. And I want the, I want everyone in the village to go, I know exactly who my council member is. 'Cause you have people that don't even, they don't even know who their congressman is. They don't know who their senators are.
They don't know if they're in Marvin or Waxom.
They don't.
Or unincorporated.
But, but, but I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put some of that fault on the local government, us, in saying so. I'm a proponent of doing, I get a, I get a, I get two hours, or, let's just say, four hours a month that I'm, that I come in here.
So that being said, all for that, given the current situation we have about having meetings, all I would ask is identify when that time is good for all of us, and we would ask, because a lot of meetings are held right in here because of space, but because it, it limits us to where we can actually have a meeting, we don't wanna be sitting down and you having a planning board.
But it'll be a set time, and then they're not scheduled a meeting out here, like you can't have...
Yeah, it'll just be in our outlook calendar.
And that's where our staff will need to communicate with staff to say, okay, this is who we've got coming in, we've got an outlook calendar, we're just putting on the outlook calendar, and, and everybody knows when, when things are happening, so that we can communicate that to, to you all, to make sure that we're not scheduling a time where we have developers come in.
So Barbie, can you guys, or can you take a look at like maybe some options and break down some options on when, kind of, how it might look calendar-wise? And then we can talk about, we can kinda finalize that next meeting.
Okay.
Or even next Friday, if you have it by then.
And I like the idea, there's you, two council members, you know, obviously, and the other thing is, no offense to you, but if both of us are here, we're, oh, it's Firethorn you're talking to, you know what I mean?
No, I think it's a rotation.
That's what I'm saying, it could be.
I think it's a, I think it's a rotation.
Well, if I know, but if I know and she sets out a schedule, what would be nice is I know I've got every second Wednesday of the month, and every fourth Wednesday of the month, I need to plan to be here, otherwise I'll call one of the else. So it's scheduled, you send me that thing, I know it's on my schedule, it automatically pops up on my schedule, but it's, it just gives anyone a chance to, to meet.
Well, it should be something like the, the mayor and councilman, Mark Lee, will meet, and then it would be council member Lynn and the mayor pro temp. So that the mayor and the mayor pro temp are not always here, so you don't have that connection with that, so...
I don't think it has to be...
That would just be...
I was gonna say, that's it, well, I'm gonna park Joe out here.
At the beginning of each...
We'll bring Joe on down here too.
You know, Kim and I are gonna do the, the first week, and then I have the, you know, I have the third week or whatever, and I do, I do it with Bob, and then the next one, I'll do it with Joe, and then just kind of rotating. But I just, having, having the community access, and it's there, and I think the importance of having the website and really kind of making it interactive and getting it out there, that no one can say, well, man, I, we never see you guys. Well, it's not, you didn't have an opportunity to.
And I think do, I think sending out a mail chip thing, and I think...
If we do it, it's...
And, and strongly encourage...
And if we do it as a coffee with council, they're not gonna know who they're gonna meet.
That's true.
So, and, and the only time that you all know you're gonna be here is just you. So the public's not gonna know who's actually gonna be here, they just know there's gonna be two council members here in the chambers to, to meet with people. So it's not actually, I'm gonna say, well, these two are gonna be here for this day. It's just gonna...
But, but, to be clear though, we, we would require an appointment, because I don't want an HOA from so-and-so and somebody else would think, coming at the same time, knowing that that's an open time, and they're both wanna hear, you know, two different issues.
And I would structure it to where they would need to come and, and make an appointment through, through the clerk in order to meet with your council.
Yes.
And strongly suggest that you, your day, your time, your name, your address, and then subject to what you're wanting to discuss.
Exactly.
And we need to rotate times for working people, so like maybe have like one weeks in the morning, one weeks in the evening, kinda rotating that, 'cause people who work, you know, wanna come in.
Evening, say shut down, what, we don't wanna get into after their hours, right?
Do you have a key?
No, we don't, we're not allowed to have a key.
And, and, and that's okay, that's all right. I don't mind, I don't mind stating what time's...
Well, I mean, there, there are ways, and we have plenty more meetings that start at 6:30, so you do the time from 5 to 6.
And that would be perfect to, to schedule that, we're already gonna be here.
Right. So something like that, like we just make the evening...
Look, we'll work with any constituent that, if they have an issue with planning, we'll, we'll work around that, so...
Okay. So Barbie can kind of work on this one?
And then the other issue with this was, what, the...
So, yes, so the referendum for the additional council seat. So, and this may be a longer conversation, and I know we'll kind of press for time with Christina Rovit being, having to leave soon, but we did the referendum to add the additional council seat. It passed. It does not mean that we have to do it, I'm still a proponent for doing it, the question is, one, do we wanna do it? Do we wanna add a seat? And two, when do we wanna add it? Do we wanna wait and let an election do it in 21, or do we wanna go ahead and appoint somebody to that position now?
It won't be in 21, would it?
Yeah, it'll be 21.
Oh, would? Okay.
And then the other thing, before we start discussing that, 'cause it goes hand-in-hand with the additional council seat, is we need to direct Chaplin to look into vacating the seat. How to, how to deem a seat vacant, so Christina, if you can...
I thought we were, we already gave him from the last...
He did not, we, he did not have that directive, so we needed...
Make a motion for that?
No.
You discussed that, but you didn't...
We discussed it, but we didn't, so if we can just direct Christina to direct him to do that, and that's consensus, then I think we're good, right?
Did the dean...
Okay, I make a mo, I make a motion to direct Christina to talk to Chaplin about having a seat vacant.
Pursue.
Deem, deem, how to pursue to deem a seat vacant on council.
And then, okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
So back to the...
So back to that, again, I'm gonna say this one more time just for the record. I am completely in favor of adding more councilmen, but I think when we get to a number of five, based on how, if you think about how we are structured right now, one mayor, four councilmen, the mayor constantly runs, but two council, he just alternates. Those council that get elected, like you two, you're on for four years. And then in two years, Kim and I would be back up for council and stuff. So, the idea behind that, if you think about it, in the past, knowing what I know, is you're very successful running with three people, okay? The, and they, a lot of times get in because they combine resources and stuff. So my concern with that, having five council members, you could have three council members sitting on a board and not be able to change it for four years. Whereas right now, it is structured that every, if, if the community gets it wrong and say someone's, they're, they're, the council ends up going off a deep edge, you can get that, you can get things changed in two years. But if you go with this, so what I'm saying basically is, we're gonna add one council, I'd rather add two council seats rather than inhabit structured where you have six council members and a mayor.
Well, and now, and now is, that, that's the ultimate goal, and that's what we talked about when we decided to do this. We'd add one, and then we would add another one, so it would, it would rotate. Now, if you wanted to go ahead and do that, obviously the referendum passed, we've listened to the constituents, they've said, yes, we want another seat. Chances are if we put it on the ballot again, they're gonna say yes again, because they've already said yes one time, right? So we don't necessarily need to put it on the ballot this time, we can just change the charter to add a six council seat. So if that's the case, and we can, we've got the one now that has been, the public said that they were interested in, so we could go ahead and appoint that person to 21, it would be a two-year term.
So, is it not clear, is it, if it's elected or appointed, right?
It's not.
And this, it's, it's not been clear.
I mean, it does not say how to, how to put the person on there.
And we have flexibility on that?
We have flexibility on, on that. My suggestion would be is, let it be elected, don't appoint them.
Well, the problem is, is we're, we're missing one council member on a regular basis, and we only have, we're making decisions with three council members.
Well, then you can change, then I, I, I would change it to adding two seats, if, that way you, you, you have more of a, an option of, of, more of the council members being present.
But then we would, we would add somebody now that would, that would be up in, what do you guys say?
23.
23. So then you would have, so we could appoint somebody now that would be the 23, 'cause they basically just had the election, and then neck and 21, you have the sixth seat.
But they're gonna have to run for election, if you appoint them, they'll still have to run for election, and people still have to vote for them.
Right, in 23.
Yeah.
But in 23, they would have to.
Exactly.
But then in 21, you would, you would have the sixth seat on the ballot, so you would have three council seats and the mayor, instead of two council seats and the mayor, and so you would have six.
Yeah.
And, and it would still be rotating, so you still have three and three.
That would be a better option, plus you would have more as far as staggered and rating.
And again, to remind anyone, how we got here, why we got here, is because of the, because there's such a small group of individuals, if one is missing, the other two can basically do what they did in the past and resign and appoint somebody and stuff, so, but if, but if, in all fairness, if the mayor had a vote, that would have never happened.
But we still deem that as, I, I still deem that as, as an illegal...
Oh, for sure.
Oh, absolutely.
As an illegal action.
But how...
So, I, I'm, I'm not in disagreement with you. I'm, I'm looking at it more from a big picture standpoint, because I do believe, every time I look at the map, we've got a, the, the donut is smaller than the, than the hole. And I would wanna do it, it would, would, being mindful of down the road, that as we start to hopefully fill in the donut hole, we can, we can find new constituents, or find new people to step up for seats in that area. So I'm just, I'm not disagreeing with what anyone's saying. But my two points is, that action was a, was an illegal action, and that should, and should not ever happen again. So I don't wanna, you know, change the world because something illegal happened. The second part is, I wanna keep it, I would, personal opinion, would be to keep it mindful that, that hopefully, we're gonna start to close some of the donut hole. Like I said, the hole's bigger than the donut.
More representation, yeah. I agree.
Well, do you have anything to add?
Well, I mean, I, the original concept that I saw it to be, that I was running under the auspices of, was I liked the idea of having four council people and a mayor breaking a tie. Because I liked the idea of the mayor being involved, and being, you know, the mayor should be...
Having skin in the game.
Yeah, have skin in the game. So I, I kinda liked the idea that, that we're led by guidance, by the leader, the mayor, and then in a tie, the mayor was always in touch with the issues at hand, and had enough information to be able to break a tie. I thought it was simple and clean, and you could always get a lot accomplished with lesser people. But, you know, I also see it from the standpoint of, as you're talking about, that, you know, you can rotate, and it would be a, it would be, as it is now with this referendum, you could have a three and a three, you know, as it's going. So I, I'm kinda mixed about it, but, you know, the, the, the people have spoken, and they, they, we're, you know, we've gotta add another council person, so it's a matter of now, how do we do it? So I kinda prefer to...
We don't have to. They just said, would you be in favor of it? Now, that doesn't mean that we have to do it. Now, part, part, and I agree with you, I think sometimes smaller is better, but the problem is, when, when we haven't had a council member show up for anything since May 20th of 19, and I'm out sick, you guys can't get anything financial done, you guys can't do any ordinance stuff. So, I mean, it is a problem, having such a small council. It is a problem, you know, people aren't gonna be out, people are gonna be sick, stuff does happen, but when, when, you know, we constantly have one person that's not here, it, it makes it difficult if somebody else isn't here.
Well, I think that needs to be fixed in one way, because again, it, it is completely and utterly unfair to the constituents of this, of this village to have someone that's absent. And we should not be changing, we should not be changing the, the structure of the village because one person chooses to be inept in their responsibilities. So I would be in favor of first resolving that issue, and then second, I would be more inclined to do adding one than adding two for the reasons I've mentioned before. Because I wanna close, I would like to close the donut hole, and I want the mayor to have skin in the game.
But if we add one, the mayor's not gonna have skin in the game.
Right.
Correct, because you're always gonna have to have two.
Well, then, then, then I would, then I would be, I would be inclined to say, let's fix, we're, we're dancing around a problem. There's one problem.
But, but we start, but we also started this before, we started this whole process before we were missing somebody.
Yes.
Because, because, yeah, we started this, this, this was not the solution to that problem.
Right, right.
We started this because we are small, and if two people are out, then we, then we can't do anything financial, and that has happened.
And if one person, say you have a two-two split, where you, you guys believe one way, these guys believe another way, when that announced person says he's not gonna be for a meeting, these two guys purely by the vote can change the agenda, which again is not necessarily legal.
And, and not do, not legal things, but they can go down the road of doing harmful things to the village with no checks and balances.
So, so, so the way you really solve this, and again, I know this is, you don't add anybody, you don't add anybody. All you do is one thing, make ones change, which is what Councilman Dispinzer recommended, but then he flipped on it when the community, you allow the mayor to vote on all issues. Because at the, right now...
Then that, to me, there's your solution. I think, so, solution number one is fix your, your absentee.
Yep.
Then number two is allow, allow the mayor to vote, because again, would you...
And it's less money.
The more, it's less money.
And I like...
The constituents have the, the ability to go out there and select their people, and if they select wrong people, then that's, votes matter.
And at the end of the day, when you have two, if you have a two and two split like we had in the past, at the end of the day, if the mayor's on one side, that doesn't matter, it's, it's, it's gonna get passed regardless if you have a full council or less than a full council, but more importantly, here's where I come from, from this. but more importantly, here's where I come from, from this, it's not, this is not a power grab at all, and it's, because it was presented to Nick, to me, and I said, Nick, whatever you wanna do, then they got all up in arms, but in my view, if I'm trying to figure out who I'm gonna vote for, I wanna know where they stand, including the mayor. As it stands right now, you guys can talk, and you can decide, and I can sit back and choose not to opine on anything on.
Can you?
That would never happen. But what I'm saying is, you have no idea who you're voting for as a mayor, because he's never had to really make decisions. I always laughed and joked, boy, my job is gonna be easy tonight, because I know one councilman's gonna be, and I don't have to worry about it. So I, I mean, of a vote, because there's gonna be three people there, but you, you wanna keep the mayor engaged, and you want the people to know how the mayor thinks, what's his vision, and what's he gonna, and it saves money, it's another stipend that we save, instead of two stipends at $5,000 a year, which is $10,000, it basically, and all it is, is allowing the mayor to vote. And I'll, I'll take on any crowd person that wants to come up and do what they do with the signs. This was Nick's idea, and I thought, that illegal move that they did on that fateful May meeting, when they knew Nick was gonna be out, I could've shut it down right there by just taking a no vote with Kim, and they would've had two votes, and we would've had two votes, and this would've never happened, by just a simple ability to say, no, we're not gonna allow, we want the full council here to make this important decision.
Then my recommendation would be to take that path. That's my, that would be my recommendation, take that path and address the absentee, because again, when you're, when you start to just take all these wild and crazy things because you have this problem that you don't wanna address, then it's a shame for the council people.
So that's where I'm at, on that.
Well, I agree on that. I think, I think the mayor, I'm really involved, I'm really about the mayor being engaged, because at the end of the day, who's the one out there out front? I mean, in other words, if there's an issue about any particular town, who's, who's out to be asked to account for whatever's going on, you know, it's always the mayor. And I never understood anyway why, you know, a mayor was just a ribbon cutter, you know, in, in a lot of cities or communities. I like the idea of, as you're mentioning, but.
I was gonna start a campaign, you know how some towns have a goat is the mayor? I was gonna start a campaign, vote for the goat, because other than that, the mayor has absolutely no ability to effect change or protect the community, because this, in my, in my, in my view, not having the mayor to vote, and I'll go on record on this, we just learned, we spent an extra $100,000 in legal fees, give the mayor a vote, and that saves a $100,000 legal thing, because they came up with their own little idea that, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna take over the meeting, I'm gonna call for my own resignation, but before I do, I'm gonna appoint someone, which to your point, I still believe is illegal as well. So, solves the issue if we don't have to bring in the other council. And the only thing that can happen is if we continue, we can't get this issue solved with the other council member who's not showing up, being replaced, then we can have situations where we have a two-two vote, and that just goes down as a no, a no vote, and because everybody's voting and everybody's engaged.
I think the other, I think the path that we kinda all kinda shook our heads to was what you were saying, the mayor has the vote, an equal vote, and we go down that path, and Bob and I have met with the people that, that have, are leading us in the direction to take care of that.
Okay, so if we want to go down the path of the mayor vote, Kim, you hadn't said much on that, so where are you at on that? You okay with that?
So you're going down the path to change the charter for the.
It's gonna be a charter change, which means there's a public thing, we're gonna have people invited. I'd suggest bring other people that, that are on your side, because there's a, there's a crew of about 20 or 30 that'll be here with pitchforks, and I'll be happy to take them on and tell them the reason why we're doing what we're doing, so.
With that being said, if we are looking at changing the charter to change the form of government, and it's not mayor council, it's town manager council, there's a lot more town manager councils where the mayor gets to vote.
Yeah, right.
So we may wanna look at doing that.
In conjunction.
So you want to change the charter to allow the mayor to vote and to change the form of government?
Yeah, which we already talked about, that was, that was, I think, a priority, and that, that's for other reasons to kinda help protect staff.
Yeah.
Quite frankly, is that in two years?
Yeah, totally agree with that.
So Barbie, I would say let's correct Chaplin.
Okay.
And staff, you start working on the research and all that.
Okay.
Okay, so we got through that, any other questions concerned?
No, we're up.
Thank you.
Did you get to decide what you're gonna do on the new PC? The referendum coverage, right?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, they did.
Because I don't think, it's, it's up to us to decide if we're gonna have this, it sounds like we're not gonna go that direction. We're gonna save a little bit of money for the community to the extent of one additional council member and just allow the mayor to vote, which.
That's what, that's what right now, but it's still unapproved.
I did wanna point out to you one thing, on your rules of procedure, you might want to revisit that, because if you were to have a vacancy, like someone was to resign, and you have a vacant seat, on your rules of procedure, there is no method for you all to assign to that.
Barbie!
So, so I think there's some language floating around for you all to change your rules of procedure.
It's on the agenda.
Okay.
To do it today.
To do it today?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got it right here.
On how to appoint, I thought that was just for other boards?
No, it's for all appointments.
All appointments, okay. All right, okay, moving on, thank you, Kim.
I'm gonna get my membership there, y'all.
Seven, review of meeting minutes for 10:14, 10:31, joint planning board 10:31, work session 12:10, regular, and 12:18, special call transition and organizational meeting. So this is, we're gonna pull those up?
It's a party!
10:14, first of the, okay.
I have one change.
Okay, will you turn the track changes on?
You tell me whenever you're ready.
I am ready.
We're starting October 14th, yeah.
Yes, October 14th.
Barbie, if you go down to planning boards present, and then you say no members were absent, we're missing Paul Capiello's name, so I don't know if he was there.
I'm sorry, yes, that is, yes.
Was he there or not there?
I don't remember, do you remember if Paul was there?
Yeah.
Okay, then I just need to add him to the present.
You just add him to the present.
Yeah, we have everyone there on the joint meeting.
Okay, that was it, because I knew we're missing somebody.
I'll just put Paul Cap.
Yep.
All right, was that the only change?
That was my only change for that meeting.
Any other changes from council?
So then, the next one.
That was for which project, this one, the general?
Well, that was for the, the corner on Bonds Road and Providence Road.
Yeah, that was the top meeting.
Yep, yep.
All right, then 10:31.
Um, okay, I have a question, it's not so much a change, but if you go to E, letter E, the very first one, it says council directed staff to contact the village attorney regarding the pool process and bring it back to council in February 2020. Did we do that? Is he bringing something back? I don't even remember the pool, what is the pool process? Like, it had to do with where the pool goes?
I think it was the ordinance for pools have to, are done by conditional use permit.
Right.
And I think that process is what.
He was looking at?
He was looking at.
Can you, can you put that on your action item and make sure that we're followed up with him about that?
All right, so, pool process.
And that's something else I'm gonna fill over, but that's later. That was my only thing for that one.
And that was on 10:31.
Yeah.
So does anybody have any changes for this one?
I do not.
Mayor, you want?
I do not, simply this time, I, before the, you know, I guess we can finish if the other council members are fine with what they, they have there. We don't have, this was when, this was the regular meeting?
That's the work session.
I was gonna say, okay, because I don't see council comments, which we didn't do anything in there.
No.
Okay?
Actually, you generally don't have.
Yeah, you just said.
Council comments.
So if you guys are fine with that, we'll move on to the next one. If I can go back to the thing, just for the record, can we put something in before the adjournment that?
On which one?
The 10:14?
Yes, that, you know, you have comments that obviously aren't verbatim or anything, or is this something to the effect that?
Which comments? You mean public comments?
Public comments, do we have copies if they submitted?
The rule is, is if they submit a statement to me, then I supply it verbatim and the minutes. If I don't, then I just, I just give them as a summary.
Okay.
Because I can't.
Okay, so we're not putting in, unless they give you something for the record, you're not putting it in other than your summary?
Right.
And then there's always the recording.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
That's all I just wanted.
Oh, can you call morning mist, right? 1409, Alex Elms, morning.
You know, they write that stuff, and I don't know.
No, 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 morning's right there now.
Is it right here?
That one, morning.
Okay.
I just, I just noticed that, sorry.
That's fine, that's fine.
Not to get off.
Was there anything else?
Not to get off topic, but as I'm looking at these agenda items, when we opened the meeting today, I did not recognize that Councilman Epps was absent again.
That's okay, the clerk verified that there was a quorum and that Councilmember Epps was absent. I noted that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, clerk.
You're welcome. So that's okay, I mean, as a general rule, if you would like for the clerk to verify that a quorum was present, then I can do that at the start of meetings.
Yep, and then just mention, just as a reminder, just because I probably have 5,000 things, but it's probably good to do that as a process.
Right. And what we can do, if you want to add something to your, into the process, I can put on there to remind you to do call of order and quorum check, so that, that we have that, make sure that.
Well, the only thing is, because if someone's just looking at it through the, even though it's not reported, if someone's just listening through the tape, it's not on recordings, and it sounds like you're so.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. Okay, so we wanna go to the 10th now?
Yep.
Okay, did you all have changes on this one?
The 10th?
Yes.
We didn't do much on that day, because we only had two.
No.
And we couldn't swear in anybody.
Nothing?
Nope.
Okay.
I had nothing this one.
Okay, and so the last one is the 18th.
I had nothing, there you go.
I was getting there too.
No changes?
No changes.
Wonderful, all right.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to add these to the consent, these, you wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion to add for approval the meeting minutes to the consent agenda at the February 11th, 2020 meeting, the minutes from 10:14, 19, which was the joint planning board meeting, 10:31, 19, which is the work session, 12:10, 19, regular session, and 12:18, 19, special call transition and organizational meeting.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That was seven, so we're on to eight, update on joint meeting dates for planning board and PR and G.
Barbie!
Oh, okay, well, I can't find my sheet, since we've changed everything. Right now, I've had most of the planning board respond to the doodle poll, and three members from PRG responded to the doodle poll, and two members responded from council to the doodle poll.
Who responded from council?
Councilman Marklees and Mayor Pro Tim Vandenmark.
I, for the record, this mayor is open more times than probably any of you, so I am very flexible.
So with that being said, your clerk would like for you all to answer the emails, because it makes my job more efficient.
Who did not answer from PR and G?
Andy Wortman.
Andy, okay. Who did not answer from planning board?
I don't remember.
Okay, all right.
I don't remember, but anyway, so that being, with that being said, February is not a good day to hold the joint meetings, so I'm looking for you all to check your calendars for March, so that I can put some, and give me some time.
Can you send a new doodle poll out?
And I'll send out a new doodle poll.
And what days are we looking, anyone?
That's why, that's why I want you to look at your calendars to see what days you all can meet with them, because basically it's a joint meeting between you and the advisory board. So if you, you all can tell me what, what's good for you, I can send out a new doodle poll based on those days and times.
Well, originally, yeah, originally.
Or you can send me an email.
Well, I was just gonna say, originally, we were having it on February 11th, and we were gonna meet with the planning board between four and five, I guess, and then we were gonna meet with the PRG, you know, five and six, and then dovetail that to the council meeting.
You mean on the retreat day?
No, no, on February 11th, yeah.
Who told you that?
I don't remember that.
Didn't we plan? Somebody sent me Village Council Regular slash PH, which I seem to believe would be PB meeting.
I don't know who would've sent that to you, because I didn't send that email.
Yeah, invitation from Marvin Clerk.
But this is, this is the way.
You're talking about the 11th, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was the 11th.
This is 6:30 to 9.
I know, but it still came from the clerk.
We would dovetail later.
And it says on there, Village Council Regular slash PH.
Yeah, I don't know what the PH meeting is, but it has nothing to do with.
No, that's, that's public hearing, that has nothing to do with, that has nothing to do with your.
Well, thank you, Barbie, you can bear on the date.
Well, anyway, I was thinking, why don't we?
Because generally, your joint meetings are held during your work set, during your retreats, and you decided not to do your, your joint meetings on the retreat day, so that's, that's.
Okay, so you're looking for March, bottom line.
I'm looking for March.
Okay, so we're in March now.
I'm wide open the first weekend, the first week in March.
I'm trying to plan a trip to get out of town, so.
Yeah, I may be tied up the first week in March, but I'm, I'm open that week of the council meeting.
What are your open days? Just give me your open days.
Well, the council meeting's on the 10th, I'm open the 9th through the 13th.
Okay.
I'm open the 16th through the 20th.
16th through the 20th?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a conflict, the 16th to 20th, I'm open the 9th through the 13th, I have a conflict.
Yeah, I mean, I'm pretty open the 9th through the 13th, I mean, I've got a couple appointments here and there, but.
Okay, well, this would be stagger times, because a lot of the planning board meetings want some evening ones too, so.
I'm fine the evening of the 9th, I'm fine the evening of the 11th. I'm not, that's it, because we've got a, we've.
And, and you're, we're talking about anywhere from, from 6 on, 6 to 7, something like that?
Yeah, I'd say the 9th or the 11th.
Okay, all right, what about the 16th to the 20th, are you available any of those evenings?
Jamie said he's not.
Not in the evenings?
I have a conflict.
Just daytimes?
No, he's gone.
No, you're gone.
He is unavailable.
You're unavailable any of those, okay, is there another week?
Well, I'm, I'm also open the 23rd through, well, it'd be the 26th, because we have a work session on the 26th, but, you know, the 23rd through the 26th, I have something on the 27th, that Friday, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good.
Well, I do too, so.
I'm good the evening, 23rd, 24th, 25th.
All right, so you're good in the evenings, AM and PM? Okay, all right, well then, that gives me, that gives me at least two weeks.
Yeah, you good the 23rd, 24th, and 25th evenings or evening days? I am too.
Okay.
So that, shoot for one of those days and keep our meetings up.
Let me shoot those weeks out to them, and I'll send out a doodle poll. Let me shoot those weeks out to them, and I'll send out a doodle poll back out today to both Planning Board and PRNG and see if they can do.
But other than the 23rd, Barbie, 4th and 25th, what other days are you sending out?
The 9th, 10th, and 11th.
Nobody asked me.
Nobody cares.
Well, well, mayor, what can you do that week of the 9th? Although, you know, the 9th is my birthday, so that's gonna be a special day.
Okay, we have a case.
It's also my buddy's birthday that day.
Oh, good.
So.
It's a good day.
I'm not available in the morning.
Oh, which morning?
At night.
Okay, well then that could be an evening.
Okay.
And I'll start it at 6.
My daughter is on spring break, so I'm not sure if I'm doing anything with her, but I got the meeting on the 10th, so I, yeah, I guess the 11th, 10th would be open in the morning. Um, and then the 11th, I would prefer not on that day.
Okay, no. But now, are you?
The last one in the morning for PRNG?
But let me ask this, are you open, do all of you want to be part of the joint meeting? Is it okay? Yeah, okay.
I mean, ideally.
Alright, okay, I was just asking, what about, and then you're okay on the 12th?
I, yeah, and then.
No.
No, no on the 12th?
So that's what.
I can't do any Thursday evenings, Jason always has some sort of practice, so.
So let me see, I can't do any Fridays, but you all don't leave me.
I'm not coming back.
You all don't leave me.
Wednesday evenings, I usually have a class that I teach, so.
Except you're, it's every other week now, so.
No, it's like, this week it's.
Well, two weeks in a row, yeah, but it's not every week.
So I'll put it out for 9, 10, and 11, and then for that week, and then March 23rd through the 26th.
I think that's what we're shooting for.
Okay.
Okay, alright, good deal, alright, so I'll send out a doodle poll for that.
Alright, thank you, Barbie.
Thank you.
Next up, we have discussion of resolution, this is roehit.
Okay, I, I got this.
Oh, you're in, okay, discussion of resolution RS dash 2020 dash 01 dash 04 for State Alcoholic Beverage Commission for Alcohol License Application and appoint an elected official to deliver the municipality opinion.
Okay, so, this is just, they just need to know who's gonna be named as the designate. So we, we have one now, but it's somebody who's not here anymore, so they, we just need an updated one. Anytime that you have alcohol sales in your town, you have to have like this resolution done. So apparently Christina said it does not have to be an elected person, it can be a staff person, or it could be an elected person. You don't do anything, you just put your name on the resolution and that's it.
And what is it for?
Alcohol sales. So we've got it at Firegore, but we're also gonna have it at Publix, so we need an updated one.
I think you need to have an elected official, I don't think you would want to give a responsibility like that to a staff.
I mean, you don't do anything.
Yeah, I know, but there's a responsibility behind it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll do it, it's fine, I can put my name down on there, I like alcohol.
Okay.
You're a alcoholic drugs czar.
I'll fish it out.
I'll be your boo.
Okay, so I need a motion for you all to appoint Kim.
You guys want to, you make that motion.
You want to make the?
I make a motion to appoint Kim Vandenberg.
Hold on, here, do this, do a question.
I make a motion to appoint Kim Vandenberg adopting RS 2020 dash 01 dash 04 04 resolution to appoint an elected official to deliver the municipal opinion on state alcohol license application.
Well, that would be Kim Vandenberg's name that you would put in there instead of elected official.
Yeah.
Okay.
Further discussion. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh.
Motion passes unanimously.
Sure, you can vote for yourself.
Conflict of interest.
So we actually appointed someone while you were here.
Ah, damn.
You didn't have to be gone. You didn't have to use the restroom?
Nope. Oh, I should have, I should have done that.
You should have gone to the restroom.
Yeah, I thought, I thought Jamie would be perfect for that, we could have meetings at the cabana. Let's, let's discuss.
I'm in charge of alcohol and fire. I'm in charge of alcohol and fire, I'm a shit.
That's my redneck.
Can I make the motion? Can I make the motion? Let me make a motion.
Sure, go ahead, thank you.
Alright, Treasury report, sorry, Jeff, sorry.
Now, you all don't have to, you just need to accept it, you don't have to approve it.
Mayor Protem here is just taking over. Review December 2019 Treasury report, next up on the item, for information.
You, you just accepted, it's, it's not for, it's not an action.
Any questions or comments on that from council? Alright, moving right along. Next up, we have rules of procedure number 41.
Yeah, okay, so because we are appointing somebody new to our planning, I mean, our Park, Second Greenway, because we have an open position, but somebody has applied for it. Our process for appointments to our own membership, which Bob actually brought up, because I wasn't thinking about that, I was really thinking about Park, Second Greenway, but it does go hand in hand with our own membership. It's not, it's not, it's very kind of gray and not very specific, so I've worked on some verbiage to kind of change it. You guys don't have this in your thing, I added it, so you guys aren't gonna have this.
Alright.
So. Because it was very vague, so this is how I would like it to read. Actually, Barbie, can you make copies of this for me?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Would you mind making copies of that? So anyway, so the thought process is, one, we need to clean it up and kind of tighten up what the process is, but two, since we just passed a statement of economic interest, we need to add that to our appointment section as well. So it just needs to be updated and cleaned up, and then there's a couple other sections in there that kind of go hand in hand that will get cleaned up as well, so I will, when I get that paper back, I'll. Then I will go over that, sorry, I should have made copies of that. So with the P, with the PRNG, if you guys haven't reached out to the applicant, which I have not done yet, let's try to have that done before the meeting on the 11th, so if we like her and want to appoint her.
Her application was in the last.
It was in the last packet. Let's reach out to her and talk to her.
To save you some time, were you able to get me that application before our contact number? Can you send out a contact number?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we would change, so that obviously the stuff in red are gonna be the changes, and it's really just, so Rule 41 is the major one, so it just cleans it up to make appointments for its own membership and other committees and boards, if any, only in open session, and then the council still uses the filing procedure to make appointments to its own membership and other committees or boards. All interested applications file an application and statement of economic interest form to the clerk expressing interest. All applications and statement of economic interest form can be kept on file for two years. Clerk shall advise the council.
Need to also include that code of ethics, because that's, that's not part of that SEI.
Oh, it's not, but isn't that part of the application?
It's a separate document, so you need to add that too.
Yep, I'm just gonna put COE, Barbie, and if you can make note of that, we'll change that. Clerk shall advise the council of their applications to the work session, will review and nominate individuals. I think, and I didn't have this on here, but I've been thinking about it, I think that we should have a, should slide E to F, B to E, and then make D an interview process, and it can be however the board determines if it's individual interviews, if you want to interview, you know, applicants two by two, or on your own.
So is this, this is for even a council member, right?
Correct.
So in the past, what has happened when we had a resignation during my first tenure, and what it really came down to, because that leaves three council members, that was the only time the mayor got the vote, whether there were four people or whatever, is in voting for appointments. But if I recall, the, there was an interview process that we, we first, there was a call for applicants, so Barbie would put something out.
Which is A, B, and C.
And everyone applies, and you give a certain timeframe that people can respond to that, saying, yeah, I'm interested in being a council member, and then we set up interviews.
Right.
And, and we call meetings that will be, you know, but it's, it's typically, because it's an interview, and is that public, or would that have to be a private?
It's public.
It would be public, so anyone can sit in and include the other applicants.
Right, because it's not an internal position, so that, which that will be in closed session. So we can be specific about the interview process, or we can be, just say, interview the applicant. So it can be you and I interview, me and Bob interview, you, me and Jamie interview, or like my plan for how we've done the board positions is you just call them individually and talk to them. So I'm open to suggestions.
I would say that we, we do leave it open, that says when, if we want to just, if the board agrees that's in, okay, this is a position that needs to be filled, we make that decision, but we leave the language opening up to saying, hey, I'll have a chance.
So interview applicant, applicants.
Yes.
However you want to interpret, interview.
Right, whether it's, you know, I mean, but, you know, allow the ability for a, all of us to be in one room too. I mean, at least take a vote on that, saying, you know, I don't want to necessarily do a one-on-one with this person, especially if it was for a council member, I might want to sit with the whole council here, asking questions to this applicant, and then even having, quite frankly, the community there to listen in.
Well, you can do it if you're at a regular meeting.
So you say, you can say, interview applicant, interview type to be determined by council. Good?
Cool.
Okay, I got it, Barbie.
Opinion of one.
And by the way, to save Barbie a little bit of effort, the applicant's name is Christina Culp, and the phone number, you wanted a contact number, do I need here, 704-517-1949.
They're sitting up, you want the whole application, so that you can look at it.
Yeah, the application.
I have the application, what was her name?
Christina Culp, and it's, it's K-R-I-S-T-Y-N-A. K-R-I-S-T.
C-U-L-P, and that's for PB position.
Yeah, and it's.
No, part-time, great.
Part, yes. And it's, and it's, phone number is 704-517-1949.
Okay.
Okay.
Barbie, I'll get up with you about these changes. Okay, so then, so if we're changing that, Rule 18 needs to change. Instead of the council shall proceed primarily by motion, except as otherwise provided for Rule 10, and in Rule, and it should be 41 and not 43, and that's appointments. So if you guys are good with these, then we'll just put the, these changes on the consent agenda.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll make a.
Now, we're changing rule, though, so don't we have, isn't there a process for changing a rule? We just change it and then it's put out there?
Yeah, because it's not like a text memo or anything like that. So I'm gonna make a motion to change Rule 18 and Rule 41 as amended in the meeting today to be put on the consent agenda on February 11th, 2020.
Change Rule 41 and 18?
18, yep.
I know it's in there, but I'm gonna make a copy of that, just to make like.
Now, do you want us to?
Did you vote?
No, Kristina.
Now I am, I'm just gonna make sure I have that before you. So we have a motion on the table to make changes as amended. Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next up.
Number 12.
Okay, so you just, this is me. It is 12.
That is.
Austin directing, Austin to be hired by Christina?
Yeah, he'd been in an intern position, and now she's gonna, wants to pay him and give him more responsibility.
Okay, is it part-time?
Yeah, yeah, so it's gonna be a rate of $15, or I guess I can say this in open session? Yeah, yeah, $15 an hour, not to exceed 20, 20 hours per week.
About that. Okay, so we're, we're leaving basically up to her to assess that he's the right person for this. We're not gonna get involved in that.
Nope. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the recommendation to hire Austin Yao as an intern to coordinate various projects until June 30th, 2020, at a rate of $15 an hour, not to exceed 20 hours per week, contingent on background approval, and direct staff to prepare the budget amendment as needed.
So do you have, do you have that information that she has?
Yeah.
So I can have it for the reference? Oh, is that what it is? I have that. Never mind, I have that.
But change it, because she said 20 years and not 20 hours.
So we have a motion on the table for the discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have 13, a placeholder, what was it for? Move D to 13, that was.
Oh, that was the funding mechanism.
She's gonna talk about, so we're gonna table that to the.
That really needs to be discussed at your retreat. That's a retreat item, I don't know why it's.
Make a motion, we don't even make a motion, but we'll just table that to.
Yeah, just table it.
Okay, and next up, I have reports and updates. First up, administrator's report, Christina's not here.
You don't have them.
So.
So, hold on, but I did have something in there, the questions that I was gonna ask Christina, so can I ask them, and Barbie, you can relay them?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've, we've approved the streetlights at the roundabouts, can we find out where we are with those? I know, like, it has been a process, so I just want to kind of find out what we're doing. And then, whenever we have action items, like I see it on. No, I'll just let you guys finish.
No, sorry.
We just got your, we just got your council.
So the action items, they show up on the minutes that you do, how do we follow up on those? Can we have like an agenda item on the next meeting of action items and where, like, what has happened with them?
Well, the practice has always been, since I've been here, is I would put those action items on a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
And they would be followed through from the process as to where they are in the queue, and we haven't been doing that, and so I, if you want to continue to do that, then I think maybe make that a direction, I don't mind doing that, and I don't know how, how they're being followed up.
Well, we just need to follow up with them, because I have no idea like what's happening, like the swimming pool thing, I'm like, well, does Chaplin know that he's, I mean, like, where are we with that? Has he been directed?
Well, see, that's.
So, so here's what I would, here's what I would recommend, maybe to help solve that. So if we have, whatever your.
That's not all there.
No, I know, but I'm looking for the action items are, the follow-up becomes the following, or you put a note to be, to be followed up on for the next meeting and stuff, and then maybe it'd be nice that, as a placeholder for you, as a clerk, it says, okay, and following up with action item A, here's where we're at with it. Following up action item B, here's where we're at with that. So you can at least give us continuous updates, and if it's not a closed-out item, it goes on to the next, stays on.
Then you as a council need to direct that to Christina, because that's not been doing, being done on a continual basis.
No, we know that, we just like to know like where we're at.
I mean, even, even staff doesn't know where some of these action items lie, and then we get asked questions and we don't have answers for them.
So how, so how about I'll bring this up at the retreat?
Yes.
On Friday, because this is, this is, I mean, it's, it's on my retreat list anyway.
Right.
List is, anyway.
And we have a spreadsheet.
Because I, because I don't know where we are with some things, like the roundabout lights and the swimming pool stuff, and I think it would be really helpful, it's just, it just needs to be another agenda item.
Yep.
And it says, action item, follow-up.
Yeah, action item update.
Well, and we were doing that with Christine Robertson, but since she's gone and Christina's taken over, then that process has kind of been dropped, so.
Retreat, action item, let's follow up next meeting, so I'll bring it up.
That's all we're doing, we'll bring it up, okay.
That's it.
And that retreat is next week?
That is Friday.
Friday morning?
Friday morning, 9:00 AM at Firegore in the room to the right.
Room to the right. You know what room that is?
I'm gonna be gone.
No, you're not.
Is that the one next to? Is that the one next to the ballroom?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the one we were in that one time.
Yeah, we had a meeting.
Yeah, it's up to you. It's just you go in and go up in the roundabout, you go under the cover, and you walk in through there, it's just off to the right.
Okay.
Good. Next up, we have Planner's Report, which is, we have nothing for that.
You had a lot of planners reports.
And we are, I know there was an agenda item that she sent out on that retreat?
Yeah.
Correct?
It was the agenda. It does not look like anything that we're used to.
Okay, I haven't looked at it.
Well, I did ask if I was supposed to put that in your normal format, and by the way, just to give you all an update on agendas, we're working, I'm working with Muticode, which is a agenda software company to help us be more efficient with our agendas internally and externally. And so your agenda format that you're looking at will change. It's not gonna be in that block, but it's gonna be really, really good. So you may, you'll see more of it at the retreat, I think. We'll talk about maybe that. I don't know what it is, but. And that's the reason why the agenda for the retreat is not in the same usual format that you usually see it, because that came from COG and.
Okay.
So.
All right, and they're coming for that, right?
COG is coming for that.
Okay, great.
All right, next up, so I don't have to do any necessarily planning, because in the past I had to do some sort of prep and all that kind of stuff.
No, you don't have to.
Maybe a State of the Union, I'll prepare.
No, you don't need to.
Would you write it, would you write it so we can just put it in there?
Shorten up the.
Yeah, so all you have.
Being called up by the clerk.
She, the Congress.
Can you write it out?
Keep me right on track.
Yeah, we'll keep you on track.
Just had breakfast.
Welcome. I hope there's a placeholder for welcoming.
There is.
Wait, does Joe can welcome everybody?
Well, I can maybe turn it over to you if you want.
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so finally, we're at Agenda. We're at Review Action Items. Barbie, you wanna?
I, you know what, I was out of my element because I use my computer, so I don't really have too many action items, so can I just go through this? I don't think there is very much, other than.
You're gonna check on the streetlights.
I'm gonna check on the streetlights and we're gonna put action items discussion on the agenda.
Yep.
And if you think of anything else, just store it in the email to us. Okay, all right. Finally, council comments?
I'm good.
I'm fine.
Okay, like to make a motion, sorry.
Oh, you gotta go into closed session.
I know, that's what I was gonna do. Sorry, Joe.
Mayor, do you have something?
I just want to say thank you for all being here on time, and we got through a lot, and I appreciate that. And again, always thankful of staff and all the work that they've done, so appreciate all of your efforts and our ability to work together on this, so looking forward to 2020 and the next week's. Next week's retreat.
Mr. Wayne, I apologize for cutting you off.
That's all right. I'm used to it. So I guess we'll need a motion to move into closed session.
Make a motion to move into closed session to review meeting minutes pursuant to NCGS 143 dash 318. That, dot 11A1 for 2517.
12:5.
She's 12:517, 12:1217, 12:1317, 11718, 21318, 31318, 41018, and 52418.
This is almost supposed to be a question. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Hang on, wait.